Well, I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight, it's Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. All commissioners are present this evening. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience who has any non-agenda public comments, they can come forward. And it looks like there's none. And with that, we will work our way towards approving the minutes of December 2019 when you guys have had a chance to read it, and if you could just make a motion.
I'd move to approve all minutes for December 19th, 2018.
Second? All those in favor of approving minutes from December 19th, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sentenced? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Looks like there's no new business. And so with that, we will go ahead and move into the public hearing on proposed accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADU. And tonight, we'll be focusing on the privacy codes, privacy parts of, we'll be doing privacy code amendments. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dave Boyd with C-Staff.
Thank you, and good evening. I just have a short presentation, and a lot of this is a repeat from last time, just background material for the public record in the public hearing. There we go. So when council adopted the recent accessory dwelling unit amendments, they directed staff to come back and planning commission to consider amendments relating to privacy concerns, particularly when a two-story detached ADU is built on or near setback lines. And just by way of example, one of the examples that we used in that code amendment was this carriage house proposal where, if allowed to build a second level, that carriage house could look into the neighbor's backyard. Now, in this particular case, the proposal didn't have any windows on that side, but it raised the question, should we regulate that? Should we prevent windows in that case? Another example that we reviewed at that time for a two-story ADU in the backyard, which again was proposed six feet from the property line of the adjacent neighbor's yard. And again, in this case, there were no windows on that face, but raising the question of whether we need to have some controls of that. One comment that came back from the commission was that blank walls are also not attractive, so maybe didn't want to just ban windows on those faces outright. So our downtown, our code doesn't, and never has regulated privacy between a single-family structure and its neighbors. There's no limits on windows for single-family windows or decks. In our downtown regulations, we do have some provisions that prohibit balconies overlooking adjacent residences on property, on setback lines, and a more discretionary guideline about windows facing adjacent residences. But those are both, in both cases, between multifamily and single-family zones, not within single-family zones, as would be the case with ADUs. And doing some further research, City of Santa Cruz has some more general guidelines, again, not prescriptive at all, so leaving a lot of latitude room for flexibility, but also not real solid regulations that the reviewer can hold an applicant to. Other jurisdictions don't address this in the code itself, but through handbooks and other guides to how to do, and this is an example from Seattle's Backyard Cottage Handbook. At the December 19th study session, the consensus seemed to be for flexible guidelines rather than prescriptive requirements. There was also interest in seeing what other local jurisdictions have done. And the only provision that we have found today, or that Mike Stanger, and I forgot to introduce Mike from, Mike Stanger from Arch, is also joining us here tonight. He found this, these regulations from MOCALTO, which start with a prescriptive requirement that accessory dwelling units shall, or dwelling units on adjacent lots be, and accessory dwelling units shall be protected in terms of privacy. But then it lists a number of ways that that protection can happen, and those specific provisions are not prescriptive themselves. So it says you have to do something and gives a menu of items that you can use. Also, at the December 19th study session, there was concern about second-level decks overlooking adjacent yards, and there was mention of a local example, and that's shown, is in your packet, and is shown here. This is a house on a fairly large lot, so the, while the accessory dwelling unit, in this case, a carriage house-type unit over a garage, has a balcony on the backside, it's, because it's a large lot and fairly heavily landscaped along the property line, there's not a real privacy issue, but you could certainly imagine this being on a tighter lot right up against the setback line where that might be the case. So given the feedback at the December 19th Planning Commission, and also the feedback that we got from our development review staff, who were inclined more towards prescriptive than guidelines, discretionary guidelines, we tried to kind of split the difference there and do something similar to MOCALTO where we, but we also wanted to keep this limited. We wanted to apply it just to two-story detached accessory dwelling units. That's the new creature that we've, that was approved and that generated this, and where those are at or near the setback lines. So we have the guidelines that for those types of units, that they shall employ any of these three techniques that do apply. So use of non-transparent windows or glass block on openings less than six feet above the second floor facing adjacent residential units. For walls of ADUs, less than 10 feet from the property line. So if you're at that five-foot property line, up to 10 feet, then there's a limit on transparent windows that are below, have a sill height of less than six feet. It directs applicants to orient second-level decks away from adjacent residential uses or provide minimum six-foot-tall screens on faces of decks less than 10 feet from the property line again. And then another technique that if you are 10 feet or more and have room for a vegetative screen, that that should, that's a technique that should be applied. So I think we covered the major possibilities here and the major potential problems with this in a way that is fairly direct and straightforward in terms of applying the code, and also limits it to the, what we saw as the real issues at hands and what we heard from the planning commission. So with that, I'll open it up to, for questions from the commission. Then if there is any, you can open it up to, for public testimony, and then go into deliberations. And we're hoping that you'll be ready to make an action on this tonight and approve the recommendation, approve the draft findings and the code amendments with any amendments that you may desire.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Okay, with that, well, I guess, if there's any, so we should have a deliberation before the public testimony? I don't think there's going to be any tonight, but...
No, if, usually we, if there are any clarifying questions...
Clarifications, okay.
You can take them either now or after public testimony.
All right, Commissioner Kehren.
Question. Does the city have requirements around landscaping, maintenance, and retention? Seen an awful lot of the, those tall arbivite these days that just aren't surviving. So stuff's getting put in and isn't lasting.
For the most part, landscaping that is required to be installed, typically, there's a bond, and the typical period for those is two years. In certain situations, it can go up to 10 years. After that, any code-required landscaping enforcement is really done on a complaint basis. So if somebody takes out required landscaping and the city receives a complaint, then we'll address that through our code compliance officer.
So is the release of bond automatic, or does it require a request and then a review?
There's an inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kehren.
Thanks for the presentation, Dave. I thought all the changes in here pretty well captured what we talked about last time during the study session. One thing I'm in agreement with would be the prescriptive approach rather than trying to regulate this to death. But one point that was, came up in our study session that I thought was pretty good was potentially limiting the size of the deck on the second level. I don't remember who brought that up last time, but I thought that was a good idea. Like, if it's a, you know, a three- or four-foot-deep deck, you're not likely to have a big party or a big group of people overlooking into the neighbor's yard versus if it's a 10-by-10 deck or something, that'd be a little bit of a different situation. I don't recommend changing it, but I, it would be nice to see if anyone else thought that was a useful provision to include.
Yeah, I would agree, Dave. I like where we're going with this. And I guess to tag on what Pat's saying, one of the pictures that you showed, which was the one where you're, you have the deck off in the woods, but it's, could potentially be an issue, but when I was looking at it, yeah, that one there on the bottom, it almost, and I don't know if there's a deck behind it, but it almost just looks like a stairway up to an entrance to the...
Yeah.
To the unit.
I didn't have a ground-level picture of the actual deck, but you can see in the aerial photo there that...
Yeah. So I guess what came to mind was, what about a staircase with a platform for an entrance to a unit? Does that constitute a deck, or is that, would that be an allowable?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I would think that we would, if it's, if it's just a big enough for an entry, I don't think we would consider that a deck and regulate it the same way, but...
And then I guess in the same vein, if it's only three or four feet wide, like Patrick's saying, it's really not a, it's more of a thoroughfare probably, from maybe an entrance on the side of the unit to the back or something like that. So it's really not a deck where people are gathering. So I don't know if there's a way to define what a deck is. I don't know if we need to go to that detail. Or maybe you just know from the industry that, hey, that part's not the deck, it's just, it's just a walkway from the door on the side to the back main deck.
I think one way to address that would be to, as Commissioner Kehbe suggested, limit the size of decks and then apply that, those deck restrictions to decks between a certain size, say 25 square feet, to, so the size of a stoop at the, at the top of the stairs up to whatever that, that limit was. You know, whether that's 100 square feet or... Yeah.
Yeah. So a question for you, then. So do you feel like, do you feel comfortable with this, just being able to determine, oh, that's not really a deck? I mean, do we need to put that kind of definition in here, or is the staff comfortable saying, well, look, that's not, that's not a deck, that's an entry and it goes to your deck? I mean, maybe we don't need to put all these little details in there.
Yeah. I think that in this case, it would be pretty straightforward to determine that that front porch is not a deck and wouldn't be subject to the requirements and other, and to, I think that's pretty straightforward. We could certainly look into that if planning commission would like to come back to that.
I'm just speaking for me. I don't think so. I just was kind of, I want to make sure that we're, that we're putting something out that you guys are comfortable, you know, you don't have to go do a bunch of research just to figure out how to, you know, to address the code. So the other item was on, on item A, so 11A. Is non-transparent windows, is that an industry-standard product that can kind of be verified, or is that something where someone puts a window in and then puts a, you know, a fog liner on it?
There are a number of different terms. It could be obscure glass, it can be glass block, and so rather than list all of the different types of...
So there's definitely an industry, that's understood when you, when you have that word in the code, that's understood by, or should be understood.
Yes. So basically, if it's a transparent window, then it would have to be, have a sill height of six feet or higher, and then everything else would be, could be allowed below that.
Okay. Well, I think other than that, I like it. I like the way we're going, and so look forward to hearing from other commissioners.
Commissioner Moroka?
Sorry I missed the study session, but I just have a couple quick questions on this. I will echo what's been previously said. Defining the size of deck, I think, is important. I don't think I'm going to hold up my decision tonight on it, but I mean, looking forward, you know, there's a lot of different ways to build a deck, and a lot of different ways to build a stairway. I would hate to be in one of those odd situations. I think, I think some sort of clearer definition in the future would be nice. Two questions. The first is, on Section B, it defines a six-foot-tall screen. Is that an industry-defined term? Because is that a fence? Is that a deck? Or, sorry, is that a fence? Is that a screen? It's not clear to me what it is, but if, maybe in the industry it is. So that's the question. Is it, is that an understood term?
I think from a review standpoint, it would be. It implies something that, that at least partially obscures direct views, so...
Okay. And then the last question is, what would occur if they replaced a non-transparent window with a regular window in the future? What would transpire if that did happen, say, five years after the structure was built?
That is, we don't have a good mechanism for, for controlling those kind of after-permit modifications, other than by, on a complaint basis. If the neighbor was uncomfortable with, you know, with somebody being able to look into their backyard, they could call us, and if, as long as it was a code requirement, we could say, no, you've got to go back to the obscure glass.
Thank you.
So I have a few questions, and I guess on that, on the deck, with regards to the deck and the size, I think it is a good idea maybe to establish a maximum size. I know there was a, somebody, I guess, maybe this is more of a discussion, but I guess, I guess I would point at that, the Meridian Avenue floor plans, those are, those would are, if what we were talking about with regards to four feet, that would, that would exceed that, so...
But that's a ground-level deck, but...
Oh, is that a ground...
As an example, that I think is...
Oh, okay. Hold on, can strike that. You know, I also want to get through this tonight. I just, and I just, I don't know, it seems, hmm, when I just read through the things that we're adding under 11, I guess this is really time for questions. It just doesn't seem very, doesn't seem very extensive. And when I hear, when I hear, you know, the obscured glass, I don't know, I just, what comes to mind visually is not that appealing, but I also understand the whole privacy issue, so... Let me just, for clarification, oh, and then, were you able to find out any more information with regards to considerations of increasing setbacks per a zone? Like, you know, if, you know, if it's R40,000, or if it's, you know, I mean, that's, that's an extreme example, so let's stick to like more normal ones, like 7200, 9600, as you, as the zoning increases, to not push that, the dwelling unit right up against, you know, not get it as close to the fence as you can. And, because I feel like that would enable people to put in actual true vegetative screening other than arbivite that are gonna, that aren't native and don't have a high drought tolerance, so, if they're not. So that's kind of why I was going with that, is it would give a little bit more opportunity for privacy between zones that are established with, with larger lots.
I did recall that, that suggestion, but I was reluctant to establish different setback rules for detached ADUs, different than the basic setback rules that we, that we already have. And we do, in our, in the citywide code, we do have larger setbacks, in some cases, for multifamily uses, which are designed to provide a bigger buffer between multifamily uses and single-family uses, or between bigger structures, you know, where multifamily uses are adjacent to each other. But that, that wasn't a direction that I felt particularly comfortable with writing into the code, a separate setback requirement for, or a different setback requirement for detached ADUs.
Any more clarifications?
Yeah, so I was glad to see this came back from the council, and for the most part, was approved with a couple of considerations, including the privacy question here. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the last meeting, but I think what was decided looks pretty good, or what was, you know, the recommendations. As far as item A, I think it might be good to add a clarification on what the less than six feet above second floor facing adjacent residential uses is. When you said sill height, that made a lot of sense to me, but it wasn't clear before that. And as far as deck sizes, I don't think it's important for us to be prescriptive on that. I mean, there's a lot of situations where a larger deck may make sense, and we have these requirements to screen the area of the deck adjacent to, or facing the adjacent property, or potentially even the whole deck, which is my next comment. On B, it says orienting second-level decks away from adjacent residential uses, or providing minimum six-foot-tall screens on faces of decks less than 10 feet from the property line. Is that the entire deck, or just a portion of the deck that faces the adjacent property line?
I would say the portion, the intent was the portion that faces the adjacent property line.
Okay. I would, if it's not clear to everybody else, I might add something about that. But I mean, ultimately, this is about visual screening, and so the comments about people congregating on a deck and noise, I think that's addressed through other city codes. So I don't think that the size of the deck is really important, rather, the screening is more important here. So with those couple of comments, I think that I would support this as written. Thanks, Dave.
Any other clarifications? Okay. Okay, and with that, go ahead and ask for any public comment on this issue? No? All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and move on to, I guess, discussion about what you brought forward today. Oh, Dave, did you have a question?
Just one comment. So I mean, one, based on Councilmember Hampton's suggestion, it would be simple to add to 11A, use of non-transparent windows or glass block on openings with sill heights of less than six feet above the second floor, to add some clarification.
That makes sense.
I like that, thank you.
So really, today, with parts of discussion on this particular topic, I guess we're just, we're just focusing on Part 11, so is my correct in assuming that, Dave, that we're just basically focusing on Part 11, we're not talking about any other, everything else is just for reference?
Yeah, for context, yeah.
For context. We can add additional items if any commissioners want to tonight, but, okay. All right, so does anybody have any discussion on, on what we have before us? We, it looks like we have clarification on A, B, and C. We'll want to come to kind of a conclusion on that, especially, it sounds like the deck Anyone? Commissioner Moroka?
The deck size for me was just more of a feedback. I think in the future, it would be nice to be a bit more prescriptive, but I was not personally advocating changing, making any changes tonight.
Commissioner Kehren?
Yeah, I'm okay leaving it as-is. I think there are a lot of different situations, so I'm, I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay. Commissioner Kehren?
I would support the minor modification that Dave suggested, that adding on-block openings with sill heights less than 10 feet.
Six feet.
Oh, less than six feet, I'm sorry. Look at the line below with the 10. But with that change, I'd support the remainder.
Okay.
One other change, based on the feedback, the, on 11B, we could add the description there, providing minimum six-foot-tall sight-obscurring screens on faces of decks. Otherwise, one could put a clear glass screen, which would not, not address the intent.
Right. Yeah, that's good. Can I give a little wiggle room there, and from my point, standpoint, because you don't, you don't necessarily want it to be one you can't even see through at all either, that would just look horrible, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I ask for one minute? I would like to consult with Dave on one thing, just for clarification.
So this is another clarification, where we say, talk about openings with sill heights less than six feet above the second floor. Some language to make sure that we're talking about above the actual floor level of the second floor.
Okay, yeah, right. That's what I took it to be, but...
The floor, not the store.
Right, right.
We were clear on the intent, but in rereading that language, Mike pointed out it could be a little confusing, so...
Okay, great.
Have as much common sense as...
Let's see, anyone else? Patricia Cecil?
So are you proposing an additional clarification on that, or?
Yeah.
For the second floor?
My first thought is to make that less than six feet above the level of the second floor, facing.
With your indulgence, we will, that's something we will fine tune, if that's okay with you. I think, I think everybody's clear on the intent of that. We'll run that by some of our reviewers and make sure that the language we're using is, is going to be understood by everybody that might read it.
Great.
In a similar vein, we could, I'm reluctant to throw out some minimum and maximum deck sizes, but we could note, when we take this to council, that, that this was a concern that was raised by, by planning commission, and provide an option for them to consider there.
Okay. I guess all I wanted to say on that note is, when you think about it, think about it, make, because it is, the Northwest is a great place to be outside, regardless if you're in ADU or in the main house. So you wouldn't want to make it too small so that people, you know, couldn't enjoy the space with a, with a table. And so just, so, is everybody's okay with the vegetative screening? And so this is, this prescriptive approach is basically like, it'd be great if you could do it, but you don't have to do that. Is that what I'm hearing? With regards to the vegetative?
No, if, if you're, if you're, the intent here was that if you're within that five to 10 foot range, then you, you have to limit the sill height and, and the transparency of the, both the inside and the outdoor spaces. Beyond 10 feet, or from 10 feet and, and more, then you can have those full, you could have full height windows, but you have to provide a vegetative screen. So.
Okay, okay, great. I'd like to, and it doesn't need to be added into the privacy settings, but, and maybe it's more of an overall, I'd love for there to be a short, I don't know, I know staff time's tight, but it'd be really interesting, I think, in like a couple of years' time, to like go visit, you know, some of the ADUs that have gone up, and, and just check in with the neighbor, just so, you know, to find out what's, what do you like about it, what don't you like about it, so that in the future, you know, because I do think a lot of these will start getting built, I hope so. And I'd want us to have some real data with regards to how they're affecting, not necessarily the people who are living the ADUs, we're providing a serious need for housing there, but also the residences next door. And I, that's more of a comment, but.
And, and it's a good suggestion. We'll certainly keep that in mind. I, my experience, if things are not going well, we hear about that.
Right. Sometimes.
Usually.
I agree with you, unless, if it's really, really bad, you'll hear about it. Sometimes if it's, I don't really like that, but it's not enough to go down to City Hall and talk to somebody.
Particularly if we're hearing similar comments or complaints that come up from, you know, different people from around the city, that's a clue to us that there's something in the code that's not working, and we pay closer attention to that.
Okay.
And we will be doing additional amendments to ADUs with the work that Arch is doing. So that will be an opportunity to have some more discussion, too, about the different aspects of this and, and how the community feels about it.
Okay, great. Well, it looks like there's no more discussion with regards to this, so we can go ahead and entertain a motion to approve, to approve this. If anybody wants to take a shot at that, looks like we have that wording on, we have the recommendation there. Well, that's not the recommendation that we need to, we're.
Do we have to close the public hearing first?
So apparently, Dave, we don't have to officially close the public hearing tonight, right? Or is that what we were just talking about earlier?
You can't, you just don't.
I'm sorry?
Yes, you should, when you, when you're ready to act, you should.
Okay.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay.
You just don't need to do it by motion.
Okay. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to oppose, close the public hearing? Or just act on my?
The action itself will close the public hearing. So it was a motion to.
Go ahead and close the public hearing. And entertain a motion to approve what we just discussed.
So.
Coach Karen?
I would make a motion to approve the language as proposed in section 12.14, 12.14, 13.5, 11A through C, with the modifications we discussed in A, clarifying it's the sill height language being added, and in B, language added for site obscuring screens, S-I-G-H-T, not S-I-T-E.
Sounds good to me.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
First, you need a second.
We need, okay, before we.
Oh, okay. I would second that.
Okay.
And now I can make a friendly amendment?
No.
It's friendly.
Yes, okay.
The other item was, we talked about addressing the, the definition of the second floor, and we're giving staff, I guess, the, the ability to come up with some, to come back with, with some verbiage on that.
To clarify that language of, yes.
Okay.
So.
Does that need a second?
It needs to be accepted by the maker of the motion and the person who seconded the motion. So.
I would accept that.
I would accept it, too. I would accept it, too.
Okay, all those, all those in favor of the motion on the table?
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, and is, is there any more discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of adopting or accepting the motion with its amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or abstention? Nope. Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
And with that, we will go ahead and move into the study session of draft 2019 planning docket. With that, we'll be joined by Bruce Blackburn. Welcome back, Bruce.
We should have a drum roll or trumpets or something.
Just very happy to have Bruce back with us.
Just, just walking is drum roll for me.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. As you identified, this is a study session regarding our annual docket, and particularly for 2019. And the purpose of tonight is to brief the planning commission on a draft 2019 docket, to receive some feedback and input from the commission, and to let you know that the city council will be taking up this item in a public hearing on February the 19th of 2019. So this is coming up pretty quickly. That's correct, right? Is it a public hearing? Yes. Usually we do. Okay. Anyway, so, and, and one of the things that I want to kind of identify that, you know, we kind of, kind of forget when we go through this process, is that the docket is a really important activity we do every year. Because within that docket, you can have items that transform your community downtown plan, or items that are so mundane, the color of the notice boards, that those are the kind of things that all get put into the docket. But they all have their own importance to this community. And in fact, this docket has some of those same things. And basically, a docket is a list of potential plan and code amendments that are going to be considered this year, and even in future years, and sometimes. And the, both the municipal code provides that amendments to the plan and development regulations can be suggested by any person. So anybody can come in and request an amendment. And the city council must initiate for consideration by motion each docket item. Now, what occurs is the council will actually select the docket items to be worked on within 2019. And then, we also identify some of the things that are mandatory, meet council goals, as well as, of course, have some citizen input on these items. Now, within your draft docket that you got in your packet, there is a number of items, and it's basically just a matrix. And essentially, you've got some status identification that talks about whether the item has been initiated and is underway, has been initiated and has not been started, or it's a new item. Now, we also have some prioritization of those items. And of course, one is mandatory. Now, those are items that must be completed to take care of a federal, state, or legal requirement. Those are things that we just have got to do. The other is, the others are items that support a council goal. And that's important to achieving council goals. Every year, the council comes up with a set of goals they'd like to achieve within the community. Another item that's, is, that comes up is optional council preference. These are items that are kind of more discretionary, and basically promote an action that addresses an issue preferred by the city council that be looked at. And of course, finally, we have new activities. These are the new tasks that we come up with every year that come from either individuals out from, within the community, or within our own development review staff, or items, other items that have just basically come up during the course of a year. One of the other items within your docket matrix is a staff estimate on hours. Now, this is where we take our experience and say, okay, we believe this is how many hours each of these tasks will take us. And that includes many, many processing provisions as well. That's a really important item as we go through this. I also want to throw up here the council goals, and I identified, by underlining in a little different color, some of the council goals that have some direct applicability to the things that are on the 2019 docket. Public safety strategy, we have some, some plan amendments to the capital facilities element. We've got economic development, Canyon Park, affordable housing. There's a number of affordable housing code amendments within the provisions. I also identified parks, recreation, open space. The Parks Department is going to be doing a update to their parks plan document. And finally, environmental stewardship and sustainability. We also have some code amendments regarding critical area protection. So you can see how a lot of these docket items fit in within the council goals. Of course, we also have the, kind of the, the fish in the room kind of a thing here, which we identify some of the priorities, and the number of hours we are anticipating for those priorities. And you can look down there, the total of all the tasks, about 4,300 hours. The amount of time we have between our available staff is about 25 minutes. So there's always a challenge to come up with what we're going to work on, and, and basically try and get all those things done. Now, the rest of this is just a duplicate of the matrix that you have already got. And I don't want to kind of go over that. But other than just to kind of introduce some of the items that we see here, the first items are, of course, mandatory things. And if you've got questions about any of these, just raise your hand, I'll respond to them. And of course, then we have some items that have been underway, that are more council goal supportive. Of course, affordable housing strategy, code amendments to do that, as well as the Canyon Park sub area. And I already have a question. Good.
Oh, I'm going to pick a nit here.
Excellent.
Looking at seven, oop, back where you were.
Yes.
I see in the priority column, supports council goal, there's a reference to E and F. And I don't see E and F in the matrix. Did something get lost, or are they?
What, what happened is, as we were scrambling to get this completed, we had a couple other items on there, and we realized, no, that's part of this and that. So.
Okay, so there was.
We had a couple double countings, yes. So actually, it is, if you look on the screen here, we've actually made that correction here.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll have another one of those later.
That was a good catch.
One other question on this page, Bruce. The Canyon Park sub area, the 700 hours, in your recap sheet, does that fall in the ongoing long range planning 940 hours? Is that part of that same category?
No, it's not. That's a separate item.
Okay.
The, and one of the things about the long range, kind of the, the overall, oop, sorry about that, you know, tasks not related to planning code amendments, those are items that we do day to day that just take a lot of time, coordinating with our development services folks, coordinating with other departments as they do other elements of their own community activities. Things like coordinating with regional agencies. We have a lot of discussions with Snoomish County, King County, and some of the other agencies. So those, we've tried and take account of those type of hours. Because if we didn't, what would happen is that we would have an overinflation of how many hours we actually can spend on planning code amendments. So we try and be realistic about that. We always try and be as efficient as we possibly can. And occasionally, those hours can go up and down as they go. But we just want to make sure that we don't forget that that is an important element of our process.
Just before Bruce goes off this slide, I just want to point out, and I think everybody knows this, but just in case, when we talk about the long range planning staff or our strategic planning staff, we're talking about Bruce and Dave. That's the sum total of hours that we have available to work on these tasks.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. I probably should have said, there's two of us.
That's okay. So I guess on that one in particular, my question is how it's categorized. I know that it's optional in one sense, but we have hired a consultant to work with the city, correct, on pushing the Canyon Park forward. So it's not like we can let them run unchecked without your guys' involvement. So it seems like some of those hours are going to fall into either mandatory, or at least higher priority than just an, an optional set of hours. That's.
Okay. Well, I was going to identify that we don't want to short ourselves on that activity, because it is such an important council goal for the year. And one of the things that we learned, even last year, when we did the Canyon Park work, is that there is an amazing amount of activity that goes on that we have to support as a staff. And it's not just necessarily the work that consultants do, the technical work that consultants do. There's a lot of meetings we have to organize, there's a lot of go back and forth, okay, well, get this information to them. And it's really adds up through a tremendous amount of time on that kind of.
Sorry, one more related to that one. I'm forgetting her name, but she came and presented the Canyon Park plan. She's on retainer with City of Bothell for a short amount of time.
Deborah Munger, yes.
Okay, is any of her, will she be applied at all this year, or is she wrapped up?
No, she was, she was literally for the two month period that Bruce was out, so.
She did a good job while you're going, she, I mean, her presentation to us was, was a good one, so.
Yes, it was really nice to have her there.
That was really nice.
I didn't have to worry about it.
So does, do any of the commissioners have any questions? Are you, are you done with your?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna.
Oh, I thought you were still going, sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we're off of number five and number seven. The idea is this, the rest of this is just going through those things. And one of the things I mentioned is some of the more mundane type of code amendments. Here's a great example of this, item number eight, which basically are items that the development services staff have identified, that have given them issues as they've done development review. Increase short plat size from four to nine lots, which is law during state law. That's a pretty big task right there. So we have quite a few hours. But the rest of these are fairly straightforward, really simple, but will do a lot of help in getting them through the processing of these projects. Yes, Ken?
I'll, I'll let you go on the I. I guess that was another edit. But, but to clarify, could you explain what you mean by initiated and not started?
Ah, very well.
It's a little confusing to me.
We do, we do a docket every year. And every year, there's a list of items that are initiated by the council through their motion. What happens is, and this is very unusual, we have a, some of those items that we just don't get to during the course of a year, because one thing took more time or another. So basically, what we have is, we have a number of items that have been initiated on previous dockets, but have not been started by staff yet.
Okay, thank you.
And at times, those aren't just that we don't get to them, it's, sometimes they initiate it, but prioritize it for the subsequent year, so.
Well, as a matter of fact, that's a good point. The landscape overhaul of the codes was item that they identified, okay, they, they initiated last year, but they said, work on it in 2019.
I was just going to talk about that one later. So, that's great.
One quick question on that slide. Bruce, letter A, the increased short plat size, we're, we're on the lower end at four units per short plat, right, compared to our neighboring jurisdictions?
Yes.
I think ex-commissioner Clark brought that one up, so it's kind of nice that it's getting some consideration moving forward. And same with the commercial B, too. It's, seems like that's some low hanging fruit for some opportunity within Bothell. It seems like that's some low hanging fruit for some opportunity within Bothell. So I know that this, the lean initiatives have been on for several years and you guys have tackled some as we've gone, but I'm glad, I'm glad they're, they're moving forward, potentially, depending on budget.
Yeah, and unfortunately, one of the things we did not provide to the commission was the list of items that we have already completed. And it's pretty impressive what has happened in the last, even just the last year. So, you know, because we go, oh, oh, we actually did a lot of these items that were on the docket from last year. And so it, it, it's really kind of nice to see that some of those items have been completed.
Bruce, real quick, item C. Clarify prohibition on rounding up in unit lot yield in Title 12. In my experience, the, the way you, at least for the single family zones, the way you calculate your lot sizes, you, you lay it out and you have a minimum lot size. And so that determines your lot yield. So is this for multifamily zones or for PUDs or something? Or what's, can you?
Actually, both of those items. What happened with particularly the PUD, when we did the clustering provision, we have, we kind of crafted a new style of determining the maximum lot yield that you could have. And what happened is that the, the city has never allowed rounding up. It's been, and it's in our plan, as a matter of fact, that how we would do these calculations. What's occurred is that a lot of development folks have come in and said, well, wait, we're doing a rounding up because other jurisdictions allow rounding up. And the, the staff has said, look, if you can just make that a little more prominent so that it's really clear how you calculate that you don't allow rounding up, that would really help us. We don't have to have those constant kind of conversations. But you're absolutely right. It would apply to both of the PUD and multifamily residential development projects.
Okay, so just to clarify, so if I'm doing a calculation and I come up with 15.9, then I'm, I'm at 15 lots?
15, that's correct.
Okay. And that, that's going to continue to be that way, correct?
Yes.
It's just getting clarified. Okay.
Right, yep. So I'll go on to the next group. This is basically some of the optional council preferences that are set up for 2019. And you're going to see, the commission, particularly the ones who have been around for a long time, are going to see the Nike Hill, Shelton View come back. Well, it's still scheduled for 2019. We're going to have some discussion about that. But the rest of these are all fairly straightforward. And we've actually seen some of these before, the sign provisions. We've still have that court case that, that we need to take care of that. And again, the council said to take care of that in 2019. The landscape regulations update, that's another one. We probably would be best served by having a consultant come and assist us with that because, you know, the landscape industry has changed so much in the last 10 years. It's been.
Yes, Bruce, on that one, so can you kind of give a little, a little background? I like what I'm reading there. And so what is kind of your take on that one? Like, what does that mean, in short?
And essentially, what's happened is that our landscape codes were last really comprehensively updated back in the 1990s. And they were kind of really written as a suburban style of landscape, you know, the kind of a front yard, the front landscape area. And we're really changing rapidly as a community to more of an urban style, particularly in some of our activity centers. So we really need to have our regulations, landscape regulations updated so we don't have a conflict between the desire to create compact walkable neighborhoods and the desire to have big lawn, big open space areas with landscaping. So that's going to be one of the really conflicts that we'd like to take a look at.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'd also like to be sure you consider water conservation in that too. Those big lawns take a lot of water and that's.
Well, and that, yeah, and we've, we've, we've been there a couple of times in the past. And so those are all points of clarification that'd be great if we could get into.
And hopefully, it'd be a big concentration on native plantings too. Things that make more sense, you know?
Yes, yeah. I mean, if you read the regulations as they are, it really does stress an ornamental style of landscaping versus a more natural type of approach in many locations.
So Bruce, was the goal to get through these and then have discussion? Or do you want us to have discussion as we go?
We're having discussion as we go and I think.
I feel like I might have missed the boat on the first couple of pages then.
And this is a study session, so, you know, we have a free exchange of dialogue.
We can go back.
Okay, since we're going and having conversations as we go, item 10, the signage.
Yes.
Are we exposed to, to legal issues by not covering this this year? I've noticed that the sign game in town is kind of getting out of control. And I, I don't know the, the nuts and bolts of that case, but it would be great to ensure that we're not going to, you know, lose some money for something we could have covered in 50 hours plus some legal help.
Right. And from what it's been described to us is that we don't have a great large exposure. Our regulations aren't seriously in trouble being in, inconsistent with that court case. But we do have a couple of elements that would raise that question. So it is an item that we probably do want to address. And it's, and primarily what that case said is that don't regulate signs based upon the content. And that basically means, well, don't allow one style of use to have a sign here, but another style of use not to have a sign there. It's basically was, look, treat them all exactly the same.
So it's the style more than the actual.
No, it's the content.
Content, okay, okay.
Okay, here's a great example. You have a sign that says, okay, you can, a restaurant sign, you can put a restaurant sign out in your, in front of your business, but you can't put a restaurant sign, the same type of sign for a real estate office, for example. You can't regulate that, but you can't allow the sign to be just for the restaurant but not allow it for real estate. You have to allow either both or neither.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm making sure I got that correct.
And, and your presentation is through 10, right? We're going to keep going?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll wait.
Anything more? Okay, we'll go on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just comment on 13. Parking, 13A, parking has become a real topic of conversation. If you chat at all with folks downtown or follow any of the stuff that's happening online, you know, a lot of these places have garages, but they charge and the vehicles are moving out on the street. And there are some real impacts on downtown parking. So I'll look forward to seeing what the study is, I guess, related to the outcome of the parking management plan. We'll look forward to that.
We do.
On, on that note, didn't last year, the council mercifully take that on themselves? As it coming back to Planning Commission or?
They did keep it to themselves. And right now, the Phase 2 study isn't, is not funded. So we are talking about ways that we can move forward without that funding. But I'm, I'm sure that's going to be a topic of discussion when we bring this to council.
All right, I'm going to go back to what my first question would have been after we got through this. Was this list curated by, with council feedback? Or was this put together by staff based on feedback from previous years?
Well, this has not been to the council yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, what staff has done here is we've taken all of this, the, the data we have, you know, including the previous dockets as well as the, the new items we've got. And we're just about to talk about some of the new items. And we've put this list together. And we wanted to bring it to you, the commission, first to get some feedback. And that was important for this, that we include you in this discussion.
And it's certainly informed by feedback that we've gotten from council, you know, in last year's docket, in their review of comp plan and, and other issues that have come before them.
Okay, so with, with that being said, item number 12, I don't think it exposes us to any risk and it's not something that's top of mind for me. So I would move it down from 12. I mean, there's a lot of stuff on here. And I know it's only 50 hours, but it's not really something I would want to jump into.
And something I probably should have said right at the start is that when we put numbers on these, we weren't really trying to put a hierarchy order here.
Okay.
We were just trying to so that when you had said, well, I've got a question about number nine or eight, we'd have a way to identify those real quickly. And this was an item that was a carryover from, you can see it goes all the way back to 2016. And that's one of the things that's kind of interesting about this docket process is that, you know, we take it to the council and the council says, eh, we'll work on it next year. And so we, we continue to have it on the docket. And we'll just continue to see what the council decides to do with it this year.
Are you asking for our feedback on creating a hierarchy? Or you just want feedback on each topic and?
So I was just going to piggyback on what, what Bruce said. So we did not prioritize these, as he said. But we will, as part of our presentation to council, we will be recommending the order or priority, the ones based on feedback we've heard from the council before. You know, what was a high priority to them last year that we didn't get to? And assuming that's still a priority, you know, that would rank higher. We'll look at the number of hours we have and allocate those and put together a package that we think we can accomplish based on some of that. And part of that is getting feedback from the Planning Commission. There are things that you think are a high priority. We're not asking you to put them in order, but if there are things that you think are really important for us to address, that's part of the feedback that we would take to the city council. Does that help?
Yeah, that helps. Do you mind if we go back to the first page and then we don't have to go back?
I don't.
So for item number five, it shows that that process has to go through 2019 to 2021. You have 150 hours plus GIS there. Is that 150 hours for the entire process or per year?
That's probably for just this year. One of the elements about, and it's, it's kind of interesting because we are going to start this buildable lands analysis that's going to really give us some great input and education about what we're going to do for our next periodic update as we talk, talk about future growth targets and future growth planning. We have to understand where we are first, and that's what this does. And the state has some new criteria and some new, basically mechanisms and methodologies they want us to employ. And while it's tough to see 150 hours there, it's going to be pretty time consuming, we believe.
Okay, so in your opinion, does, does doing that sooner than later help us?
Well, one of the things that's interesting is that we actually do have some check-in timeframes during, you know, we have a certain amount of tasks we have to have in 2019, 2020, 21. And one of the things that we got to remember is that a periodic plan update takes a good two years to do. So if we don't have the information until 2022, we may not have a really good understanding of where we need to be for our comp plan as we start that process.
Okay.
So a couple of things about that is the, the counties are actually responsible under the state legislation for providing the buildable lands reports. So we, we provide data to them, but we have to make sure we're providing all the correct data and that it's, it's all up to, up to snuff and everything. So we have the two counties that we have to work with. The methodologies hopefully will be the same this year, given the new guidance from Commerce. So a lot of that time, and Bruce is correct, the 150 hours is for 2019. So a lot of that time is, is pulling that information together, providing that to the county, reviewing the analysis that they send back to us, the counties, I should say. The other thing I want to say about this is, this is, Bruce mentioned the, the 2023 update. That seems like it's a long ways away, but this is actually the beginning of that process. So there are several things that are going to happen between now and, and June of 2023 when our next update is due to the state, assuming the legislature doesn't move the deadlines on us again. The, the, this is the first step in that we have to report our, our capacity, how we've been doing in terms of, of the buildable lands. Have we been meeting the densities that we have, that we have projected? The next step in that will be our growth targets. So this will help inform how much growth we have the capacity for or where we might need to make increases in order to, to increase that capacity to, to take that new growth. And again, we'll be getting targets from both counties. We'll be working with both of them to, to accept those targets and figure out, you know, that, that we can accommodate that. That will then also inform the amendments to the countywide planning policies that will be updated once the regional plan is adopted, which is due to be adopted next June. Not 19, I'm sorry, June of 2020, May or, or June of 2020. So that's Vision 2050, that's Puget Sound Regional Councils. That also affects our future growth plans. So that with the targets, with the buildable lands, then informs our comprehensive plan update, which, as I said, is due in '23. We will start that in '21. So it's really not that far away. It's, and it's a sequence of things that are going to happen leading up to that.
Question, the counties. So do the counties view the city of Bothell as an entity? Or does Snohomish County look at targets within Snohomish County, Bothell? And King County look at targets within King County, Bothell?
Unfortunately, the latter.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yes, and that is something that is, we're not uniquely challenged. There are a few other cities that have to deal with that, but not many. And it's one of the issues that I raise regularly at regional meetings and to see if there's a way. And I haven't been told no yet. So we're going to keep pushing the idea that we have a little bit more latitude of being able to move some of that growth within our city limits as long as we're still accommodating the targets that were assigned by both of those counties. Whether we'll ultimately be able to do that, I don't know. I'm perpetually optimistic, but this one I, we may not get, so.
That would make sense, but it doesn't necessarily mean.
Which is probably why we won't be able to do it, yeah.
So he may have opened a can of worms, but is that a decision that would have to be made by the state legislature? Or is that a PSRC decision?
I think that would be something we could agree to at the regional level. So if PSRC and Snohomish and King and the city of Bothell all agree that, yes, we can, we can do this and we have some way to account for that. That's, that's how I'm viewing it, yeah. We haven't gotten to that level of discussion yet, but I'm, I'm still talking.
All right, we'll keep us posted. Thanks.
So not to jump the gun here, but I heard you say you were looking for some feedback for things that we thought were important. And as I read through the list, there are two things that stick out with me. The, the, the one is bullet point A, number eight. That just seems like a laundry list of good things that should happen that will save time and effort. And, and for me, knowing about dying by a thousand paper cuts, I, I would like to see that actioned on hopefully earlier in 2019 rather than later. I, I think it's just important. It's good for, good for the citizens of Bothell. It's good for the employees of Bothell. It's good for Planning Commission and, and council. So I think that's important. And then the other thing that I want to raise in terms of a priority for me is Canyon Park. You routinely hear about the, the sentiment that a lot of focus is, is aimed towards downtown Bothell. And, and we really need to realize that Canyon Park is a really important part of the city as well. So like, from my perspective, if, if we accomplish that this year, that would be, and I know it's only Phase 2, but if we accomplish that, that this year, that's great for the city of Bothell. So I wanted to throw that out.
And then, and then, that was all I had. Thank you. Chris, do you have some others? Do you want him to pick up where he left off?
No, thanks for letting me go back and cover that. You're, you're good to go on, I think, number 14 where we were.
This is where we start in on the new items that staff has identified that have occurred since the last docket, as well as a couple of property owner requests. We do have two of these this year. One is for a code amendment that would allow nursing homes and rehabilitation centers to be a condition of use within single family residential zones. And the other is a plan and code amendment, basically a rezone for a couple of pieces of properties that are just off of 185th, 187th, sorry, street. Those are two that we have received. They have made the formal supplemental to the city. So we will be taking these up for discussion purposes. I would note, the nursing home rehabilitation center, that's the only one we have in the city of Bothell. We only have one. And what they are wanting to do is just to expand to, you know, have more private rooms instead of the, the shared rooms and things like that. And maybe improve their rehabilitation aspect of their facility. As far as the property owner requests, that's basically a, an, an upzone that would increase the capacity. We aren't talking a huge number here. We're going from like five to seven or something like that. But, you know, those are all things that we're going to be talking about. One of the elements that we have thought about over the years is trying to group when we have a capacity increase in one fell sweep as part of our periodic plan update processes. And that may be where this one falls, as well as perhaps even the Nike Hill planning code amendments. So these are all things we're going to have a little more discussion on a staff level. And of course, we'll bring, talk to the council about these as well. The rest of these are some new items. One is, of course, from the school district. They'd like to have the city do some processing for school impact fees. Basically, the city would be the one who would be taking in the fees, collecting the fees and informing the school district versus, right now, it's kind of vice versa. The school district collects the fees and informs the city. That's something we're going to have a discussion about. One of the things that. One of the things that occurred here just recently was that the council was asked to do a park dedication on a small piece of property. And one of the things the council has had is says, you know, they would like to have a little more definitive, clear process where the council has their input a little bit earlier in the process instead of having it late. So that's a fairly straightforward item, but it could get complex because it does involve dedications. And finally, number 20 is a placeholder. The shoreline board is doing through their shoreline master program update right now. And they've looked at some of the buffer provisions within the current SMP and they say, nah, we may want to ask the council for permission to take a look at those things in the future.
So Bruce, really quick on 18. Can you give a little more background on that one?
Yes.
Are we talking streets that are gated or why are we getting more of these requests, do you think?
Well, that's a good question. What we have seen is that we have seen an uptick in the number of developments that are asking for private streets. And sometimes it's a certain style of development. It's not the single family residential subdivisions. It's been a lot of these detached condos or other forms of townhomes, townhouses. And they have been asking for private streets. And that brings a whole host of policy issues that really have not been addressed by the city. So this is a really good element for us to have a discussion about, do a little bit of research, some investigation, and come up with some policy discussions on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I do think that one is fraught with a whole lot of potentially interesting ideas. You know, the developer may consider it to be a private street, but three, five, 10 years later, the residents on it will look to the city to maintain it. So there's, and then the standards that they're built to. Some of these things start private and then get turned over later. So I, this, you may be undercounting this one for the time it will take, although I see you have other departments involved.
Yeah, and this is one of these where we're going to be working heavily with the public works department. They have a real vested interest in what they have to maintain in the future.
And in response to the question, these typically aren't gated. It's just the ownership is private.
A quick question on number 15. So if it's an adult family home, those are not prohibited in any residential, but if it's specifically a nursing home, then that's where the regulations fall? Okay.
Yep, yep. You nailed it right on the head. Basically, the idea is an adult family home, which is only a very limited number of, up to 15 maximum. In this case, I think they have 40 some odd clients on the facility. I, you know, I can't remember what the exact number is, but, and it's an interesting aspect of our code that it just does not allow that late use until you get into the really intense
All right, so I guess, looks like you've got, okay, there you go. But then you have some, on the back, there's some landmark preservation tasks?
Oh, I'm sorry, and I should have included that one. One of the things that we have within our division is that we do include the landmark preservation board work tasks. And we have a consultant that comes on board that takes care of those items. And what she did is she has put together her proposed 2019 docket list of items that she's going to work on. And there's some kind of exciting things here, most of which are covered by grants. So we've been pretty lucky that she's actually identified some grant funding to increase the hours that she works on these items and generally covers these things within that grant number. So, and these are all things that we really need to be done. Our historic resources inventory has been years since we've updated that. The Bothell Then and Now book, again, the same thing. I mean, you know, the pace of development we have in the city, you take a now photo and two years later, it's different. So a lot of interesting things. And I don't want to get too much into what she's doing there, but the native peoples project is particularly kind of intriguing. Be kind of fun to see how that works out. Anyway, so these are all things that the historic resources consultant will be doing in the course of 2019.
On number one there, it's something like that, is there, I know cities are always, because all cities are strapped for cash, I'm glad to know about these grant dollars that are coming in for this, but I know cities are always looking for opportunities where there can be volunteer opportunities. Is, I mean, is something like this number one, I mean, if one can imagine it, is there, could there be any opportunity there for, opportunity from the community to volunteer for that, even if it's with the landmark preservation board?
And that could be an option. One of the elements that we have to be a little bit careful is because it does take some training. And some of that training is, okay, identify what that architectural style is and identify some of the other features. But I think if you've got a volunteer trained enough, that that might be an option.
I have an additional question. How many of these homeowner requests, property owner requests is an average year?
We only received two this year and only one that would change their zoning, so that's pretty low. Usually we get about three, maybe four. But it depends on the year, and the further you get away from your last periodic update, the more of those you get. And that's one of the things that's kind of interesting, the fact that, you know, we're still pretty fresh. I know it's only three years and, oh, that's not very long, but, and coming up on four years now, but we probably will start to see a few more of these as the time goes on. But yeah, we only, we only get, you know, maybe sometimes a handful each year.
And then idle curiosity, the rehabilitation home, did that predate Bothell City, Bothell City being?
It predates the annexation.
Thank you, that's what the word is looking for, thank you.
All right, does anybody have any other comments or questions or priorities for staff with regards to the docket? And actually, this might be a good segue, I think I'm thinking a message on this, Mike, but it's kind of associated with it. It'd be awesome, this is more just a comment, and is, to be able to get together with city council again, I know in the past, we've sat around at a table and just kind of chatted about things that are going on in the docket or how things are going. And if there's an opportunity to do that sometime this year, that would be, I think that'd be great.
Yes, that did get an email on that.
Yeah.
And I am looking into that, so.
Okay, yeah, great.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
I have one more question before we kind of dive in and share our preferences here. Item number seven. For item C there, can you explain more about the title 12 requirement?
I'm sorry, which one is that?
Under seven, and then it's C.
Oh, C? Yeah, one of the things that we have is that we have a definition of residential care facility within our code. It's not anywhere near close to what the regional RCW, the revised code of Washington identifies. So we really need to kind of address some of those variances we have between state law and our own regulations.
Is that something that's required by the state or we just need to bring it in line?
It's always way easier to have the same definitions of the state. And what will happen is that we'll get somebody coming from the counter and say, hey, look, I have a residential care facility, I want to do this. And we look up in the code, well, that's not listed in one of our use matrix dig, therefore it's not allowed. It really just causes lots of headache.
All right, great. I know, and it sounds like Commissioner Moro Cook kind of gave some of his direction with regards to what he thinks the priority should be. Appreciate that. And so if there's any other commissioners who kind of want to give direction, maybe if there's two or three things that come to mind that you'd like, or not, that you'd like to see direction given on?
Yeah, so I'll just throw mine in for item seven and eight as well. They've already been mentioned, but if you could just jot that down and carry that forward.
I think mine would be like number seven, eight, and 11. And then also number one on the landmark preservation task.
And I'd say six, seven, 13, and 14. Like those city-owned properties need to be addressed.
Right, if it's going to go like this. If I had to choose one, I think six is the most important thing on here that's not required. Seven's also important. I'd like to add 11 to the list. I think that that's something that we should come up with some consensus on and how we want to move forward with the landscaping regulations. And then I too agree with Commissioner about the downtown planning code amendments regarding city-owned property. So that's number 14.
And just, I'm going to throw one additional one there, I shouldn't have overlooked six, that was a pretty, that was a pretty big one, the Canyon Park.
Oh, yes. And then, I also just want to throw out, I think, oops, sorry, I think I lost the number. Oh, yeah, 15. I would hope that we would, as a city prioritize that this year for someone who's in our community. That's just a thought. But I still stand by, I think six and eight are very important for the community.
And you said 15, the nursing home?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would hate for us to make someone wait an additional year where possible.
I have a question about that. Is 13, no, is it 13? No, what's the one for the adult homes? 15. Is that related at all to number nine with the Nike Sheldon Hill Queensborough area?
No.
It wouldn't be covered, okay. Never mind.
Well, okay, never say no in this field, okay? But ordinarily, the, and it just depends on how we decide to go with the Nike Hill area. It was really concentrated on a pretty defined geographic area that's beyond, that doesn't include this parcel.
Okay, thanks. I think that was my first meeting, so it's been a while.
It has been a while.
Hey Bruce, and one last clarification on 20. Did you explain them, how is, what is a buffer enhancement? Like, what are they, if I'm, I know, it looks like we'll hear more about it in the future, but, and I know there's something coming up about a potential meeting with shorelines, but what is a buffer enhancement?
Yeah, essentially, when we crafted the 2013 shoreline master program update, there was a decision to allow some smaller buffer widths in exchange for enhancement of those buffers. It's kind of a way to get to some of the degraded condition of the buffers within, along the Sumatran, and it only applies to Sumatran River, along the Sumatran River. And, you know, we've all walked along that trail, we've kind of looked at what we've got in some locations. If there's a buffer, it's great. If there's not a buffer, that's not too unusual. And what was a way to get some buffer that was in a better condition? And that was basically what it was.
Okay, thanks.
So in anticipation of a council question, number, item number nine is the only one on the list that's noted as being previously recommended by the planning commission, a previous planning commission back in 2016. In the event the council asks, is that still a priority for the commission?
Can I ask a clarifying question? That was a long time ago when we, when we looked at that. Wasn't there an impetus for us looking at that because it was a regional activity center or not, Bruce?
Yeah, basically what happens is that within our comprehensive plan, we have a number of activity centers identified throughout the community. And the intersection of Meridian Avenue and 228th Street was one of those items identified as an activity center. And that was the genesis of going through that process. There was also a couple of, he's going to, he's going to give me some more information because I may not forget. There was also a couple of individual private property owners who actually did submit requests within that area as well, that also kind of, okay, let's take a look at this. It actually started in the 2015 periodic update. And then there was not enough time to really get into it, so we went through a separate process after that process was completed. And it involved the, where the FEMA and the Army Reserve have a piece of property. And it boiled down into a pretty small area where we've assigned, well, the commission's recommendation was to have an RAC with a 35-foot height limit.
Was that, was there anything behind that effort that was regulatory in nature or somehow legally required for the city to do that?
No, no. You know, one of the things that we try and do is if we have a comprehensive plan that says we should take certain actions, we like to try and get those things completed within our implemented regulations. And that was the only genesis we had from that standpoint, was that our comprehensive plan says we should have a little activity center here, so let's create the zoning that would allow that activity center to occur.
So I heard you say, and I remember now, there was a couple of property owner requests in that package. And I guess to tag on with what Commissioner Moro Cook was saying, those people have been hanging now for four, five year, four years, three years, four years on their request? So I guess to answer your question, I don't know how important it is, but we would sure love to see it go forward. It was a lot of work as well from our part, so. So if they ask you the question, I mean, I guess I'm speaking for the whole commission here, but I would say, yeah, we think that's important. But anybody can disagree because I'm speaking just as one commissioner, so.
Can you clarify? We sent a motion to the council for consideration on that, and they elected not to take it up, right?
Yeah, essentially what the council did at that time said, look, you know what? We're going to take this up later. And they basically have put it off a couple of times just because of our docket is so full every year. And it's, you have to, you have to establish priorities and it has not risen to a high level. Last year's docket, the council did say, look, yeah, we will address this in 2019.
So if it was brought back, would it come back to the planning commissioner or would it go straight to council?
It's, I guess if I was asked as my, what I would recommend, I would recommend going back to the planning commission. It doesn't have to, it just kind of depends on your own plate of what you've got going on. But, you know, it's four or five years old, the thought process of mine are four or five years old. It may not be a not bad idea to say, hey, let's look at this again, and maybe there's a different solution that is derived from the public process this time or not. I just don't know, but it's logical for the commission to take that back up.
There are other factors that have come up in the meantime, for example, the affordable housing piece of this that was not part of the discussion, I believe, because that wasn't a tool that was available to you at that time. So that's something that we would want to take a closer look at. So our recommendation to the council would be that it does come back to the planning commission.
Right.
That we may not have to go through the entire thing again because of all the work that you did before, but that's something we'd want to take a closer look at.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the, kind of the foundation for the affordable housing policy that was moved through us and then council kind of came from the discussion about this area?
Yeah, it was identified, yeah. That was one of the items that the commission said, look, you know, if we're going to start doing this, increasing capacity, maybe we should start looking at affordable housing. So this was, you know, one of those, one of those topics that started that discussion, certainly.
The other possibility, depending on whether there are still individual property owners there that are interested in pursuing this change, if not, then one of the things we might look at is folding it into the next update as well. Because that is something that, we've identified a couple of other things here that we don't think are pressing in terms of a timeline. So it would make sense, particularly for a larger area like that, to fold it into the periodic update.
How big an area are we talking about there?
How big an area are we talking about there? I'm generally familiar with the area, so how far out do you go? There, there is some multifamily housing up on Fourth.
If I recall, it's mostly just at the intersection of 228th and Meridian. And there's this kind of, there's a few acres there maybe.
It's an activity center.
And then down Meridian Avenue.
You say about 25 acres?
A little bit.
It's not even that large.
Not that large?
Yeah.
I think I've got a map. Oh, I do have a map.
I was going to say 15.
Yeah, maybe 15 acres. And the area that was, the eventually, eventual planning commission recommendation was only these parcels here. That's about seven acres. Yeah.
Yeah, because the use is different when you look up Fourth West. There are a number of apartments. I don't know that it's showing here, but I'm just, we have friends that live up that way. And I know on the west side, there is some multifamily housing there.
I don't have it good, but this location right here is multifamily housing and just about where the E is, is multifamily housing as well, just off of Fourth Avenue West. And the city assigned an R 4,000 designation to those parcels when we annexed them.
Thank you.
So as a relatively new member of the council or commission, I had missed this. So if you're asking for our priority, I would actually encourage that we re-bring this up as a priority, assuming there is still landowner interest. Because it sounds like the commission did previously do work on this and made a recommendation. And, and I think if we're going to communicate that to council, I think it's important that they hear that again this year. Because I would hate for us to not move this work forward, assuming that there's interest. So, so if you're asking me what my priorities are, I guess I would add that one to the list because the work is somewhat effectively done. I understand it may come back to us, or maybe we can ask our, ask the council to take it up this year.
So this is kind of an editorial comment, I guess, on the, on the process. So I can't remember how many months we spent on that, but it was a lot. It was the better part of a year, wasn't it, or?
It was a number of months, yes. And, and I think it's because we did a really robust outreach to the folks in the area just to have some discussion.
So just kind of hearing, you know, going through this discussion and hearing that, well, that one's so old, we're going to have to bring it back. It's just like a punch in the gut for me because, you know, I have four kids and, you know, it's not like all of us have other things going on. And so it's, it's a little disheartening for me and I'm not trying to be negative. But, and, you know, maybe there's a way, and maybe it's tying together a little bit more with, with where council's going, and this is certainly part of the process. But if, if we could be working on things that we know are, like in the top of the priority and are going to go through, that would be way more efficient than, you know, hitting on one and then, you know, and I realize there's, you know, stuff comes up and I know they got to switch. But is there any way that we as a commission can be a little more agile and a little more supportive, I guess, of where council's going? So that we're not, you know, for nine months off, kind of working on some, it's not, but it's not important and it needs to be looked at. But now we're going to have to dust it off again and, you know, spend probably several more months on it. So anyway, that's just, for what it's worth, that's kind of where I'm sitting. It's kind of a bummer, so.
No, that, that makes a lot of sense what Commissioner Cecil says there. We did spend a lot of time on it. So if we do bring it back, I mean, I hope it wouldn't be as extensive of, just to be cognizant of your time as well, of staff time, which is obviously severely limited. So, yeah, that would be my comment.
And I appreciate those comments and those feelings, and I certainly understand I would feel the same way. And in some ways, we, this happens more often to staff than it does to planning commission, in my experience. Not here, but in other places that I've worked, is a lot of time and effort often goes into projects and then, for various reasons, they don't move forward. So that does happen from time to time. We certainly don't want that to happen very often. And the other thing I would say to that is that that's one of the reasons that we do the docket, is to make sure that the council understands what the, what the work program is, that they have blessed that work program and said, yes, this is what we want you to focus on, so that as other things come up, it's part of my job to go to the council and say, okay, you have changed the priorities now. Here's what that means in terms of the work program, just to make sure that any decisions are informed and deliberate on their part.
So really keeping that docket up at the top of the stack and looking at that thing all the time is?
It's, it's a very important tool for us, yes, yes. And we, we look at our budget when we do the docket and there's a reason we take this to the council. And part of the conversation with them is, you know, these are the resources, these are all of the things that are on the list. Obviously, we can't do all of them. We want to make sure that we're doing the things that are important to them, so that we don't run into the situation where we've put a lot of time and effort into something and find out it really wasn't that important to the council.
Yeah, and that's not a commentary on the staff or the council. And I realize that the winds of change are always shifting and that kind of thing. But, and like I said, I don't know what the answer is, but maybe somebody has an answer. I don't know. Maybe somebody at council or.
Well, I don't know if this is an answer, but I would like to point out that one of the reasons we spent a lot of time on that one was because we did spend a lot of time with, working with Arch, with Mike and Arthur, developing those affordable housing code sections that, and that laid the groundwork for the adoption of that chapter 1207.
For sure, yeah. Some of that work was, yes.
So it wasn't all in vain.
Well, we also got to hear from the Sheldon View people and, you know, so that was, there was a lot of public involvement in that process and.
Yes, there were.
I don't know what the status of that is now, but if we kind of dusted it off and did it again, is it going to be another Sheldon, you remember all the folks from, yeah, so, so I don't know, maybe they feel like, anyway. It's just, yeah, take it for what it's worth.
No, appreciate the feedback and I do understand that. And that is something, if this does rise to the level of a priority for the council, we will spend some time looking at just how much do we need to do if it, you know, bringing it back to the commission and what do we need your feedback on? So we're not rehashing everything. We're really focusing on the things that need to be done.
Yeah, and just looking back on that, sorry, is that, and I understand Commissioner Cecil's a little frustration with that too. But we did, I mean, we were, we were looking at a large swath of land before we focused on this small part. But we spent quite a bit of time on the small part as well, so, yeah.
I think one thing we all need to be aware of is with the passage of time, there's been a lot of change in that area. When you look at Meridian south of 228th, there's been a lot of development in the past few years. So, and I wasn't here when it was heard and I, I accept that there was a robust public involvement process. There's a whole new public there. So, you know, that's one of the challenges with things dragging out, the conditions change.
So Dave, I'm glad you brought up the, the point that we spent the majority of our time on the affordable housing policy. Is that the same reason that council did not take it up? Because they didn't want to kind of spot zone this affordable housing policy? They wanted to do a citywide program first? Or were there other reasons that council didn't take it up?
That was one reason that we heard. I think there was, there were other, other reasons behind it. But in the end, after trying with this area and with the South Riverside, with the affordable housing related to a specific area, we did decide that it would probably be better to do it as a separate item. And then, and then as we do upzones or code changes that increase capacity, we can apply that.
So this has the potential to take a lot less time and be far, far more straightforward?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Well, thanks for the presentation, Bruce.
Oh, thank you very much.
From Michael and Dave. No old business. You have to give your reports from staff here with regards to a potential meeting with the shorelines board, joint meeting?
That's right. And I apologize, I intended to send you a note to kind of prime this. But shorelines board is, has until June 30th to finish their work on this update. And some of their work is related to work that will be bringing to planning commission amendments to the critical areas code. They don't have to be identical. Currently, they are very close to identical. But for that reason, we had programmed into their, the public participation plan for the shoreline board, a joint meeting in February. We're now thinking that that may not need to be a joint meeting, that instead we might have, we might have the shoreline board invite both the planning commission and Parks Board or, and/or representative of those boards to their February meeting and do it in conjunction with a public open house as part of their process. But I did want to bring that up and, and see about planning commission's availability to participate in a, in a meeting, whether, whether it's a joint meeting or the open house and a more informal meeting where, where planning commissioners are invited on February 11th is the date that planning, or that shoreline board is, it's their meeting date in February. So one, is there interest in, in doing, participating in that and are the commissioners available that night? It's a Monday.
I would be interested in just attending that open house. I mean, I'd be available.
Yes, I'd be interested in available.
I've got to double check, but I think I'll be free.
So we're, I'm looking at the calendar here. You're showing open house five to six and then the meeting after that. So the meeting would be six till whatever.
Yeah, six to eight-ish.
I would have to dig into my calendar a little bit more. I can't give an answer today, sorry.
I can poll, poll you via email on that.
That'd be great, Dave. Thanks.
But it's good to get that, that feedback and we'll be tying that down in the next few days.
All right. Any report, is it, any more staff reports? Is that Michael?
One other, two other quick items. So for the February 6th meeting, just want to let you know, the study session that we're, we're scheduling for the small cell wireless, I'm going to be in touch with the providers, the service providers, and inviting some of them to come and present the types of equipment and design that they use now. And I'll give you a short presentation on what we're doing with small cells and why we're going through this process in a rather tight timeline. We have federal regulations that are telling us what we can and cannot do in terms of the regulation. So we're having to get some things in place pretty quickly. The council put the interim ordinance in place back in January 8th. We have until April 14th to adopt design standards for those small cell facilities in public right-of-way. So that's what we're going to be focusing on for the next couple of months with the planning commission to get that recommendation to the council in time for their action. And then will be doing the, the permanent ordinance to replace the interim ordinance. That has to be done by June 14th, I believe. So we'll be bringing that back to you after we get through the design pieces of it. And that should be fairly straightforward, just some adjustments to the, to the interim code. So that will be the focus for the next couple of meetings, at least with the planning commission. I noticed we had the ADU public hearing in here for February 6th, so obviously that's, that's done. You're ahead of schedule. Great. So I don't know at this point if we'll be adding anything else to that agenda, but we'll certainly keep you posted on that. The other thing I was going to mention is if I, if I recall correctly, I didn't bring the calendar with me, but I believe the council is, is going to take action on the boarding commission appointments at their February 5th meeting. If that's the case, the appointment of the planning commission would take effect immediately because of the vacancy. So we will, I don't know if we'll be able to get that person on board for the 6th, but we'll certainly do the best we can and at least invite them to the meeting.
Okay, great.
That would apply, that would apply to Commissioner Rick Byer's former seat. The other two would happen in.
April 1st or something like that? Okay.
And looking at the calendar, Commissioner Moro Cook mentioned that he is not available on February 20th. Can we just do a quorum check? Are there any others that have conflicts that night?
Yeah, the, it was just called out. That is actually midwinter break for North Shore School District, which is why I'm out.
Actually, I don't think I'm available either.
Nor am I, Commissioner Cecil.
Okay, it, it looks like we're going to have to move that one. So we'll, we'll look at some alternative dates, if not the 27th. It may be, and we'll look at the calendar relative to the council calendar. The small cell is the, is the one that I'm most interested in because of the timeline we have on that, the deadline. So if we can move that to your first meeting in March and still make our deadlines with the council, we'll do that. Otherwise, we may be looking at the 27th.
And earlier, previous to the meeting, I had, I had said I would be available on the 27th, so you may want to poll. I mean, is it worth a poll? A quick poll to see if we're available on the 27th?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I would be available.
I'm seeing a nod from Commissioner Karenin. Okay. And Commissioner Cecil, so we have four.
And I'll poll, poll the commission on that as well.
Okay, email?
For, for those that need to check your calendars and.
Okay.
But if you would put that date at least tentative on your calendars for now, we'd appreciate that.
So a quick, quick question for you. It may be unorthodox and I don't know how much material we need to cover, how big the decision is in small cell wireless, but could we jump straight to a public hearing next week? I mean, on the, on the 6th? Or do we have to hold the study session first?
We can look at that. The only concern I have is being able to prepare all the materials in time for that. So I think it's going to be more helpful for you to see what we're talking about before we bring, before we hold a public hearing and bring you some, some draft language.
All right, thank you.
It's, it's complex enough that I think we should probably spend two sessions. It's, no, it's a great, a great question and a good idea. And sometimes we, we can do that.
I'll see your reports from members. It's great to see you back, Bruce. It's awesome how, it's great to have everybody here tonight. Like with that, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
I was, does the favor say aye? Aye. We are adjourned.